Mr. Schuberdecker.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Here.
And Mr. West.
Here.
Seven council members present, one absent.
Very good. If you'd rise with me. Pastor Bruce Ray is present and he will lead us in the limitations. Thank you, sir. Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the reprieve from the ice and snow over the weekend. We're grateful, Lord, that you saw us through it in our community. Back to work and serving you, Lord, and with very little inconvenience. Thank you, Lord, for the folks that take care of our city. Thank you, Lord, for your blessings on us as we work together to continue to move our community forward. Our hearts grieve tonight. Since we last met, we've had four police officers slain and numerous injured in our nation. And, Lord, it behooves us not only to pray for our own law enforcement officers in our community, but for those who serve their communities throughout our country. We grieve these losses and we pray, Lord, for the families, for the communities they serve, and for their fellow officers in each department. As well, firefighters have been injured twice in falling structures, once in Idaho and once in Ohio. They enter these buildings, Lord, at great risk, doing their work, Lord, on behalf of the people they serve. Again, we pray for their safety and those that are healing, we pray for your presence. I thank you, Lord, for our mayor, council persons, the administrators, and all those who have offices and lead this city's work. We ask you to continue to bless them with good health, wisdom, and, Lord, the will to lead us as we work together forward. I pray for this session tonight and for all discussions that are held, including the one we just heard. I pray for any decisions that are made, that they'll be pleasing to you. I would ask you to continue to bless those that are connected to the city family, but certainly not limited to this list that I'll share with you, Lord. I pray for Mayor Benton, Chief Myers. I pray, Lord, tonight for Mr. and Mrs. Rickclue, Mr. Chylin, Mr. Moore. I want to pray, Lord, today for any others who need your touch during this season. Thank you for your love, your grace, and your strength. Guide us, we pray, in Christ's name. Amen.
Thanks, Pastor.
At the beginning of every council meeting, we set aside for visitors that would like to share concerns with the city council. And if you're not on the agenda already, then this is the time for you to come forward. We just ask that you give us your name and your address and limit your comments to no longer than five minutes, of which the city clerk will time you on that. Again, so at this time, is there anyone present who'd like to address the council over concern that they have? Seeing no one coming forward. Again, I'd like to thank Ballard Simmons for being with us this evening. If you all don't know him, he will be the new first ward council person. So maybe you get a chance to meet him before we leave tonight. I see no one coming forward on the comments from visitors, so we'll move on to our public hearings tonight, of which we have two. The first public hearing is a hearing, again, on taxi cab service and it has to do with Ricky Lacy and his license with TNR Taxi. The public hearing will be handled in the following format, of which I'll make three calls for anyone who wants to speak in opposition of TNR's application. And then I will make three calls for anyone speaking in favor of that. So at this time, we'll begin with the first call for anyone who's, anyone present who would like to speak in opposition of the proposed application. Please come to the mic. Okay, seeing no one coming forward, I'll make the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of the proposed application? Again, seeing no one coming forward, I'll make the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of the proposed application? Very good. Thank you. I'll now make three calls issued for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the matter being considered, which is TNR's application. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed application? Please come to the mic. Again, seeing no one coming forward, I'll make the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed application? Again, seeing no one coming forward, I'll make the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed application? Very good. We will consider this application later in the meeting. And so we'll now declare that hearing closed and we'll move on to our second public hearing, which is an application for a change in zoning from R1 to R3 along Rayworth Drive. Again, the same format will be used. And we'll begin now with declaring the hearing open. I'll now issue three calls for anyone who'd like to speak in opposition of this proposed zoning change. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of the proposed zoning change? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll issue a second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of the proposed zoning change? Again, seeing no one coming forward, I'll issue the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of the proposed zoning change? Again, seeing no one coming forward, we'll now issue three calls for anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the proposed matter. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed zoning change? Good evening, Mr. Hugh.
Hi there. I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have about what I'm getting ready to do. I'd like to speak in favor of zoning this piece of property.
I want to know what your plan on doing. Are these going to be duplexes or what are you doing?
Really haven't totally decided. There's a possibility we can put 20 units there and...
Multi-level or just...
Oh, no, I don't like multi-level stuff. I'm going to cater to the older folks, two bedroom, two bath, with garages, like a brick front, and that's my plan. If I get enough energy to do that.
Anybody else have a question? Thank you very much, Mr. Hugh.
Thank you.
I'll now issue a second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed zoning change? Very good. I'll now issue the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed zoning change? Again, seeing no one coming forward. We'll now declare this public hearing is closed and we'll move back to our regular agenda. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Looks like there's only one item on the consent agenda, which is the reappointment of Ken Swain to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I won't necessarily ask if anyone would like to remove that.
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you very much. I have a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. We now have unfinished business and the only unfinished business we have would be if you have additional questions. Sure, we ask him to stay in case you had anything that came up. Do you have any, anyone want to ask anything else on the news tag?
You always email when you're calling.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't get you.
We can email or call him.
Oh, okay.
If you have any questions.
Very good. We've got your number.
Yeah, we know where you're at.
Very good. Thank you again for giving us your time this evening and it was very informative.
My pleasure. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart.
Okay, well now move on to new business. First item of new business, the approval of the application submitted by Ricky Lacy of TNR Taxi to establish a taxi cab service within the city. I believe that was in your packet. Are there any questions on that? Any discussion?
Do we have a phone number?
Or is not, I'll hear a motion for approval. Yeah.
If somebody wants to call this cab, do we have a phone number available?
I guess he's promoting.
I'm sure he has a phone number on his application and we'll do...
Well, there's one there that I seen for the insurance, but I didn't see it.
Yeah, right here.
It would be his, it's his obligation to advertise his own business. All we're doing is approving.
Right, thank you.
His bill, the operating. Yes, Mr. Moore?
How many current licensed cab companies do we have right now?
Currently, we have one officially licensed.
And was that, which one is that?
Star Taxi.
What is it?
That the one from Columbia guy?
Thank you, that's right, yeah.
Now, haven't we seen an application from Mr. Lacy before?
We've seen a couple from Mr. Lacy. He has had a couple partner changes over the past year and now is taking on this endeavor on his own. So this is his request to open a separate business under TNR Taxi. He's no longer affiliated with the other two.
So the front page of the paper that is, was TNR now? The lady who bought the...
My understanding is the woman that, however all that came about, we'll start with that. However all that came about, she will have a public hearing at the next city council meeting in order to be properly licensed. At this time, she does not have a city business license.
Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am. You answered all my questions.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Is that a motion for approval?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. So I have a motion in a second for approval of this application. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good, thank you. That motion passed. I believe Mr. Gary Vaughn is with us this evening. Gary, thank you for coming in. We're going to talk about Morel's and Microbrews. I'm ready.
Thank you, Council, Mayor. Bill, how you doing? I'm going to reflect on last year real quick before we go on down this year. Yeah, thank you. We refer to it as Morel's and monsoons. If anybody remembers, that was the only time I've been here, 51 years I'm old, and I don't remember all of them, the early years, but I don't remember Stinson Creek ever being that high. And the likelihood that it would ever happen again is probably pretty low, but we're never known, right? We did change a few things as a result of that and not completely. We're still going to be outside, still going to be on Court Street. We are going to rent some bigger tents, big tents, and that'll give us some shelter. And we're calling shade this year, give us some more shade. I have talked to both the police chief and the fire chief, and they're well aware of the size of the tents that we're going to put down there and try to abide by all rules and will abide by rules of leaving lane down through the Court Street area. We are going to back up the hours. The hours will be backed up to 12 to 4 instead of 1 to 5. It's still only going to be a four-hour event. It's just that we're thinking to get the streets closed off or it's going to be closed off at the same time, we'll be able to get them relieved and off the streets a little earlier this year. We are going to have a stage in front of the new playhouse that we're trying to get up and going. And I'm sure everybody's kind of aware of that and it's coming along. They're putting tiers in it right now. And this is going to give us a big opportunity to shut it down afterwards. Then we're going to let people move from our event and then we're going to have music venues in the theater itself right after that. So that's what we're going to try to get, hey, while if you're out of town, come in and see our new theater as well. So at 4:00, we have music playing inside the theater after that moment. And that's not our group of people. This will be the people who are in charge of the theater, so they're well aware. We're working hand in hand with them. So bottom line is, I would like to be able to shut off the streets, Court Street, from right about, it would be 7th Street where I think I would be right there by the theater, down to 5th Street, no further down. Same, it's basically the same footprint as we've always had. It's that we're just moved up a little bit further to allow the stage to be up by the theater.
Would 7th Street be open for through traffic and would 5th Street be open for through traffic?
Well, that becomes, the situation with that, that morning is the, I do believe we always have, Farmer's Market opens up in front of the courthouse. And so that 5th Street usually is closed off right there between Bluff Street and Court Street anyway. And we will always, but the 5th Street will be, remained open from over to Nichols.
That was on my list of questions. Was if anybody, did anybody confirm that Farmer's Market will be operating on April 28th? Do we know?
I have not made a...
Chief's nodding his head.
I think they will.
Okay. I didn't know how early, I didn't think they started until May, but I wasn't sure.
Based on precedence and every year, that has always been the Farmer's Market kickoff. And they like to coincide that with them. So they'll bring in some of their, you know, spinach's and some of their leaf lettuces and that's usually their kickoff point. And this will be the 28th of April, by the way. I'm sorry I didn't bring up that date, the 28th of April. Usually it's on alumni weekend. We've always tried to work around it now because it's, you know, used to. I'm going to move this up. I'm hunkering and so... Oh, all right, thank you, yeah. What was I talking about? Just going back to...
Alumni Weekend.
Alumni Weekend. And we found that we used to do that because we wanted more people to come to it. Well, it's not a problem anymore. This has become, Missouri Life is running, we have a full-page ad in that. There's been articles written on this. We have a gentleman who's coming in who has already guaranteed 400 pounds of mid-Missouri, and Missouri mushrooms this year, and we're guaranteed that. So we've learned a lot in these six years of doing this. This will be our sixth year. And we're hoping that we make better decisions on what we're doing, except for the weather. We can, of course, change that. Other than that, this is what I'm asking, is that we can do this. The only thing is, I'm asking of the city is, and Chris has always been very nice and accommodating, is we have to run a little bit of electricity and very little at that, I think. Very minimal at the most. And I think as for one of the food trucks, that would be Mr. Burford Leroux. We'll have his gator wagon up there as well. And maybe for the band, and that's it. Normally, we used to get picnic tables and things of that nature. And that was very nice of the city to allow us to do that. But they're very heavy and I was always the only one to go, either go get them or take them off, unload them. And just for me, I don't want to do that anymore, so we're renting all that from now on. So if there's any questions, I've got the Morel's and Microbrews. It's only a four-hour event and it's going to be set on April 28th from 12 to 4. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
I've got one since I'm new to all of this.
Sure.
If you accidentally make a profit, does it stick with the Brick District and the theater or what?
Yes, ma'am. The Brick District always retains. It is the only fundraiser we have in the Brick District. And some of the monies that we've used, we gave $10,000 to one of the new businesses. That came from the Brick District this year. So to let you know what the Brick District does do, we, you're aware of one of the new businesses in the Blatner Buildings come in. And to help keep that and to see that they would move their businesses into this town, we offered $10,000 to them. So these are things that we do to help our Brick District grow and be more viable into our future.
Taking care of your own.
Taking care of our own and those who want to come and join in. I think that the profits are, can be good. Last year, I think we lost a couple thousand. But you know what? Considering how bad it was, we feel that we were very successful. There were people out in there. And to know how much money we had involved in it and to know that we only lost that small amount of money, we felt that it was a huge success.
Thank you. Any other questions? I was going to move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for approval of the Morel's and Microbrews event and their support requested. Any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good.
Thank you so much. I'll see you at the event.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stuart.
Might want to do votes next. Okay, let's move on. Looks like we have a request by, from Police Chief Myers to destroy some records. This is kind of an ongoing housekeeping event. Do I have any questions or discussion of this?
I have one question. This accident report. What if I was hurt in a wreck and I want to go back to your old files and get the report? Or would somebody that's having a problem with this, would they have already got the information they needed?
If it's an accident, the insurance companies get that within, oh, a month at the very, very most. If there's any litigation, that's usually within a year. And the state allows us to get rid of these records in timely manner. This is just a yearly thing that we do.
Okay, thanks.
Is there statute of limitations on them?
Yes, as to how long you have to keep them?
No, I meant on the litigation, if I was hurt in an accident.
That's a civil issue, but yeah, I think there's three years maybe or something like that.
Because these are 12 years old, so.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
We usually keep at least 10 and sometimes a little longer, but...
Very good, thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Any other questions? Very good. I have a motion in a second for approval. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Next item on the agenda is council concerns. It's a time that you can bring forth any issue that you'd like to have discussed or discussed at a future time. And anyway, let me start this time with Councilman Schuberdecker.
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, Stuart. Councilor Moore?
I'm going to be good tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Vaughn?
Not me.
Thank you.
I don't, I mean, I understand the South Winds thing and I come in and talk to Kyle about it today a little bit. But this map that we got, or descend us, you can't even read it. I mean, the prints are small on it. I don't think my mind, a fine glass, would work on it. So I come in and looked at a big one, but thought I'd try to get a little better something out of that, Paul. And my second thing is, is about the ballpark complex, how's that coming along?
Clay, would you like to address that, please?
We're doing a lot of the final design work in-house with our engineering department. We've been, I think we got, as far as the community center and the baseball complex, we got a pretty good drawing, good design of what we want. We're just going to work on getting all the specs laid out, how we want the projects to go. And then we're going to put it out for what they call a design build bid. That way, I think, I think we'll have a better idea of what the actual costs are going to be for each, for each item. So I'd say maybe, I'd say maybe a month, we might have something to bring to you.
Well, that was my concern. I mean, I hear a lot of talk out of Jeff City in Columbia about doing ours and we're going to wait around forever and then we're wasting our time building it.
Well, since we went this direction and we're doing everything in-house, it's probably going to be a little bit slower, but...
Well, as long as we're moving along.
We are.
I just hadn't heard anything in a while.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Clay. Anything else, Councilman Vaughn?
No.
Councilperson Gray?
Yes, sir. I know this is weather-related, but do we have a projected date where we put the new wall up by the cemetery? When are we going to do the sidewalks and when will the street be done? I believe the street's MODOT, isn't it? Research that?
Be this, this next year.
Just, that's all I can tell them.
Summer and spring.
Okay. And then there's a thing, young man, on television about these millennials are getting like an old school bus. They're painting it, they're taking their wheels off and they're setting it on a foundation and calling it a home. Do we have anything to cover, something like that, or is that going to fall under the tiny house rules and regulations?
Would you like to address that?
As long as it's X number of feet, it seems like that's all you care about.
Well, this is the first I've ever heard of this.
Wouldn't have a seal or a stamp or a mobile home?
If they do that and they remodel it and they bring it up to current code, I suppose it wouldn't be any different than a home with metal sheeting on the outside of it. But it's something we'd have to look into, you know, and check the codes and this sort of thing.
Would it not?
Thank you, pardon, sir.
It's similar to a mobile home because it's not on a solid foundation.
It would, it'd be close. We could possibly even require those to be in a mobile home park.
Well, the lady that bought one said she got it because she bought the lot and then she had a foundation and she has over 200 square feet and it only cost her $14,000.
That's very possible.
And I'm just wondering, are we going to be sticking these? As long as I've got a foundation, I can put anything on it or how does that operate?
Yep. Pretty much. I mean, you know, if it meets the code and it's code standard, it would be considered a tiny house and I assume that we would have to accept it.
Okay, and as long as it's got the required amount of little footage, that's what you're concerned about.
Yes, ma'am, right, yes, as long as it doesn't reach...
Okay, thanks. And then I'm going back to my old headache about this smart grid. And this I got off of the website for the City of Fulton. And it says, "The City of Fulton, Missouri Smart Grid Project installed smart meters for all residents and commercial electrical companies inside the city limits and deployed supporting two-way communications in fractures." Now, it's my understanding, sir, that you said not all of them had been installed and you were still testing. And this report says 2011. Where is it at? What's going on? It has you down here as a contact person.
Yeah, that report is correct. That was the electric meters and they were done then.
You've got all of those in?
Yes.
According to this one, it said, "We bought, what, 5,000 meters and part of them was in the city limits and part of them was commercial."
Correct.
Okay. There's more than 5,000 houses in the City of Fulton?
No. About 5,200 electric customers.
And then on one of these pages, it said we were planning on going into the gas and water. Is that all going to be a part of this grant money that we got?
Nope. The gas and water are not in the grant money, electric only.
All right, so then are we going to have to go back and request another? All right, so then are we gonna have to go back and request another grant?
No.
I mean, I'm looking at this one-plus million dollars for the little bitty town we have, is this electrical thing gonna pay the city back?
That was a decision this council made.
Well, I wasn't here at the time, so you tell me.
I understand. There is benefits to the meters, yes, ma'am.
Well, in one of these articles, you know, the Holy Grail to the citizens of Fulton 50 and above, AARP is opposed to this, and the Consumers Council of Missouri is opposed to these smart grids.
Are you talking about the smart grid or the smart meters? Because that's two different things. The information you gave me at a previous meeting.
Right.
Was talking about transmission lines and things like that. There was only one small snippet in that whole group of papers you gave me that was about smart meters. And maybe we made a mistake by calling it the smart grid system when we started, but the smart meters is just the meters themselves. And when people start talking about smart grid, they're talking about a whole parcel of stuff that's not meters. And the information you gave me last time, that's what it was about, was the aging infrastructure, the transmission lines and things like that. There was only one little piece about smart meters, so I don't know, when they oppose it, are they talking about the smart grid or the smart meters? I don't know what you're referring to there, because it's different pieces.
Yeah, well, whatever you say, smart grid, and I'm assuming that it all relates to electrical, well, this one here says electrical services, period. But I'm just keep looking at this $1 million or plus, where's the money coming from to pay for that?
Well, a lot of it came from the US government.
Well, this says half of it, the federal government.
Half of it did come from the federal government.
Yeah, well, it started out at 3 million something, and then, from what I understand, our share is gonna be this one, because we split it 50/50.
That's correct, it's a little over 3 million total.
For a city this size and this poor, I just think this is all ridiculous.
Well, you got about, you got about an $8 million wastewater tram plant being built right now, so I mean, everything costs a lot of money.
Well, I'm not arguing that, but I just, I just don't think this thing is ever gonna pay for itself.
I understand your concerns.
That's just my, I'm store opinion.
I understand your concerns.
And everybody's got one. And then, I also had requested a year-to-date, what has this cost us? Does it have to be this, this, and this? If you can just say, "This is what we started with, and this is how much more we've had to add to it," that's something I would like to have, and I believe that would have to come from you. I just wanna know, is this beneficial to us? One of these reports says that the way computers are updating so frequently, if this started in 2011, this is already antique, as far as the computer services are concerned.
I don't know if I would call it antique, I wouldn't go that far.
Anyway, that's all my concerns.
Okay, very good, thank you. Councilman Stone?
I have a thank you to the police department and to the citizens of the city of Fulton. Saturday, I attended a funeral of a classmate that passed away very unexpectedly of an aneurysm, and she had a very long procession, and a very slow procession, because she actually had a horse-drawn carriage as her hearse, and as we went from the new Southside Baptist Church down to the Southside Cemetery on Ravine Street, that was a long stretch for horse-drawn carriage, and a very long procession, because she was well-known in the community. The, the police department were extremely supportive and helpful at every intersection, everything we needed, and all along the way, the, the citizens of this great city stopped, showed respect, were patient, and were very respectful, so just, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Councilwoman Reclu? Your turn.
You.
Oh.
Nothing, no.
Okay, thanks. Mr. West?
I really didn't have anything, except I wanna state that the council voted to pursue the smart meters, we called it the smart grid, we did get money from the federal government and everything, we already spent that money, as far as I can tell, I don't know that we're putting, we're still trying to get the gas and the water to work, I think we're spending some money on that, I don't know how much, but it was a council decision to pursue those funds in 2009, as part of the, I forget what program it was from the federal government, but anyway, I just wanted to make that statement, that's all.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for those comments. We're wrong with resolutions, of which there are none, move to ordinances. Bill number 1496, we have two of them for first reading, 1496 is an ordinance that has to do with zoning that you heard about earlier this evening. Councilman Vaughn, would you please present bill number 1496 for first reading?
Bill number 1496, an ordinance reclassifying, under the zoning ordinance, certain lands in the city of Fulton, Missouri, known as One Ray Worth Drive, and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place bill 1496 for second reading at the next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Very good, I have a motion in a second to advance bill number 1496. Is there any further discussion of the motion?
I do have one question.
Sure.
The, the One Ray Worth Drive, I was asking tonight, and they weren't real sure, is that an address, or is that drive going up there, is that a public street? Or do you know?
I have no idea.
Can you tell us where this is at?
Yeah.
I don't hear very well, and I apologize, I'm not a very good listener.
Oh, that's.
I'm kind of mad, that's kind of tricky, I guess, but, number one, Ray Worth Drive is actually owned by the city of Fulton, and they actually own the Ysman Industries property.
That's all I want.
The location, yeah.
Is that, yeah, I listed the first location, was it Ysman?
We didn't get a copy of the zoning request.
Lions Club.
Which normally we would get.
Okay.
Very good. So, that's gonna be my request, I would like a copy of the zoning request. Thank you. I understand this went to planning and zoning, was there a recommendation?
Their recommendation was to accept that proposal.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Well, I just stated, we usually get a copy of the zoning request in our packet, and that didn't come this time. Could we please have that sent to us?
Yeah, I think the reason we didn't, because we had it the last meeting, but, yeah, it probably should've been in this one.
We did?
There was, there was a request in our last.
There was one, I believe, in the planning and zoning, but I, I'll get it from Wes and.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just send it in electronic, we'll be fine.
Yep.
That would clear up a lot of the questions.
Thank you. Make sure that happened.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Very good, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of advancing bill number 1496, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. 1496 advances for second reading next meeting. Bill number 1497 is an ordinance that authorizes the mayor to approve Plant Number 5 for Southland Councilwoman Reclu, would you please present 1497 first reading and title only?
Yes, bill number 1497, an ordinance authorized by the mayor, on behalf of the city of Fulton, to approve Plant 5 for Southland Estates subdivision. I make a motion to place bill number 1497 for second reading at our next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Excuse me.
Have a motion in a second to advance bill number 1497, is there any discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion of advancing 1497, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, 1497 is advanced for second reading at next meeting. Our next item is our announcements, MML Legislative Conference courses today and tomorrow, and our next city council meeting will be February 27th. Is there any other announcements?
There are a couple documents in your packet, those are just there for informational purposes, so if you have questions, just let us know on that.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Real quick, first a question, will we stand with our ordinance on demolishing dilapidated equipment or houses? Are we gonna see that next meeting?
Probably, probably next council meeting.
Okay.
I had a conversation with Tom Riley last Thursday or Friday, and he's gonna be helping us actually on the first, first demolition process.
Okay, and Ash Wednesday's tomorrow, Lynn starts, fish fries at St. Peter's, first one's this Friday. Come and eat.
Very good. I know, it was a shameless plug, but.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hold on, hold on.
Just, just second. I do have a.
Need for an executive.
Need for an executive session, excuse me, and this to discuss land and litigation.
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second. I can have a motion in a second to adjourn to executive session.
Yep, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
And Ms. Gray.